City Clerk, if you could take the role, please.
Certainly. Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffolk, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Here.
All right. Terrific. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, July 9, 2018 Evanston City Council meeting. We have everybody, and I am expecting Alderman Braithwaite to be joining us shortly. Just one announcement, a really big thank you to the Fourth of July Association, who put on another incredible Fourth of July here in Evanston, that I know many, many people participated in, from games in the morning for kids and families, to a wonderful parade, to an amazing symphony down at the Arrington Lagoon, to the incredible fireworks. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. With that, City Manager, do you have any announcements this evening?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Rich Eddington, the Chief of Police, is he in the room? Rich, can you step forward? Chief, you made an announcement earlier today. Perhaps you could share that for the assembled dais.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, members of the dais, today at a news conference, I announced my intention to retire by December 31 of this year. It is my hope that, in working with the City Manager, this will give the city sufficient time to conduct a search for my replacement. I want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the honor of serving in this position for the City of Evanston Police Department. It is an outstanding group of individuals who strive every day to improve the quality of life, and it has been my honor to be their leader these last 11 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We will move forward with a recruitment process. The chief has indicated his last day would be December 31, so we hope to have a new chief in place before that. Next, I'd like to introduce our new Local Government Management Fellow. Her name is Chana Lee Gallagher. Chana Lee, could you step up to the podium?
Hi.
Chana Lee is our latest Local Government Management Fellow. She comes to us just completing her master's degree at Mills College in Oakland, California, where she was president of the ICMA Student Chapter. She has a minor in, excuse me, a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies and social justice, with a minor in critical psychology from the California Institute of Integral Studies in San Francisco. Prior to arriving here, she had an internship with the City of Santa Barbara, the San Francisco District Attorney's Office, and other opportunities, legal advocate and mentor with SF Casa in San Francisco. So, Chana Lee, we're very happy to have you. Just tomorrow is your first day, but we wanted to have you come to the council and meet everyone tonight.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
And then, lastly, Lincoln Street Beach. Many people have known this as Northwestern University's beach. With the construction of the new facility, the football practice facility on the lakefront, this beach has been reconstructed and reconfigured. It is now known as Lincoln Street Beach. The university is providing staff support for this, and the city residents have access to it using the beach token system. So, we're very pleased to announce that. That information was distributed, I believe, the beginning part of last week. There will remain some issues regarding the property itself. The construction of the new facility created this new beach area, and Alderman Fisk has asked staff to look further into this. So, we will be doing that, and we'll be reporting back further on the 23th of July. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Terrific. Thank you. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I have three communications. I will not read them, but I will very quickly summarize them. We have three folks who submitted public comment who could not attend, and I will distribute that to the dais.
Terrific.
Terrific.
Sorry. And then also, we have a, next week, we have, the Clerk's office is hosting an event to educate residents on the various boards, commissions, and committees. We are grateful that you provided, Ms. Richardson, to help staff and understand and explain how folks can walk through the process of joining committee. We're also hoping to have some other city staff members who can talk about the various work that their specific board or commission does.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. We're going to move into public comment. As you guys all know, we have set aside 45 minutes for public comment. Tonight, it looks like we have, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people for public comment, so maximum up to 3 minutes. As always, I appreciate people being civil and respectful and polite. So, we'll go ahead and get this started today. We've got Pauline Kurtides Sheehan. And again, why don't you guys all pronounce your name when you get up here, in case I've just messed it all up, which is very possible.
Nobody has ever messed my name up.
Except for me.
Gertie.
And then, we've got Dan Joseph, and then Michelle Hayes. Welcome.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and respected members of the City Council. My name is Pauline Kurtides Sheehan, and I speak to you this evening as a lifelong Evanstonian and as a new resident of Edmire Court. I also speak to you as an architect registered to practice in the state of Illinois since 1990, as a member of the American Institute of Architects, and as a past member of the Board of Trustees of the Evanston Historical Society. I am here regarding the appeal process for 9/17 Edmire Court, and I must express my dismay at the direction of this process. After the proposal was unanimously rejected by the Preservation Commission, we expected it to go to the Planning and Development Committee. Instead of going to Planning and Development, it was added to the agenda as a special order of business after the agenda had been posted online. And the appeal paperwork was not part of the original meeting packet and was added only late on Monday, today, the day of the meeting, after I called the City Manager's office looking for it. Thus, I believe our neighbors were not given adequate time to prepare a response, and in this regard, I feel that the residents of Evanston have been denied their rights to due process of the law. At this time, I understand that it will be discussed at a future date, and I would ask that the future information packet, as it's issued, also include items that the Evanston residents had requested be included in the record at the meeting on June 12, which includes a letter collectively signed by 14 of the 16 residents of Edmire Court, asking that the city and the owners of this property abide by the rules we all agree to abide by as residents of a historic district and follow the standards of design. And we also ask that a white paper that we had prepared for this situation be included in the record, if and when it is reviewed as part of an appeal. I would also hope that the City Council, when they review this situation, reserve the right to decline to hear the appeal, which is part of what Planning and Development would have been able to do, and defer instead to the expertise of the professionals who are members of the Preservation Commission and who we rely on to render opinions in these matters, given their special expertise. So, again, I thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to a meeting sometime in the future.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Pauline. Then, Dan Joseph, then Michelle Hayes, and then Sylvia Rodriguez.
Good evening, everybody. I am Dan Joseph of 1510 Greenwood, and I wish to speak tonight about the most exciting thing on the council's agenda: general obligation bonds. Well, at least I'd like to make it a little more exciting. I wish to buy some when they're issued, but I have no idea how to approach Goldman Sachs, Morgan Stanley, or any other investment banker. I suggest that Evanston require all underwriters who subscribe to these bonds to send a representative for a portion of a day to City Hall to market the bonds to Evanstonians. According to a bond trader I spoke to at Fidelity Investment, and Marty Lyons, remember him? This is nothing that's prohibited. Prohibited. Plus, it doesn't cost the city any money, and may receive good press from Wall Street Journal or other financial publications. The underwriters will definitely get one participant: me. Can we amend the ordinance to accommodate this? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Michelle Hayes.
Good evening. At the Evanston Fourth of July Parade this year, I was disappointed to find myself arrested for an act of protest. I went to the parade as a cautionary tale from my own heritage, as an abuela de Plaza de Mayo, one of the women whose children were disappeared by the Argentine government of the 1970s. While trying to call attention to national issues, part of my protest was an experiment. Evanston's parade is famous for free speech, and during it, police frequently turn a blind eye to minor ordinance violations, such as public consumption of alcohol and people walking across the route. I was fairly confident I would be allowed to walk a distance ahead of the parade without incident, and did so, trying to keep distance between myself in the beginning of the parade. When police officers came and asked me to step aside, I told them I would comply once I reached the reviewing stand, as I was keeping pace with the parade and not trying to obstruct it. I also informed them that if they stopped me before that point, I would passively resist by going limp. After walking with me for a block or so, the officers indicated they were going to remove me if I didn't step aside, so I sat down and did as I said I would. They picked me up and carried me to the parkway, where they handcuffed me and took me to a holding cell. I was charged with obstructing traffic and failure to obey a police officer. The parade route was closed without traffic to obstruct, but even so, I would have moved further ahead of the parade had the police asked me to do so. The officers, who were following orders as politely and efficiently as possible, had only the most disruptive solution possible available to them. As a community, I fear we blame the police for abuses of power, while expecting them to use powers of arrest on inconveniences. At least one member of the crowd had called for me to be carried away. We need to look deeper than the police department to address injustices in Evanston by working cooperatively with the police to create effective checks and balances on police power and help citizens understand when it is and is not appropriate to call police. We also need non-police solutions for minor problems and inconveniences. One place to start is City Code 9-5-18-1: refusal to obey an officer while violating City Code. This redundant ordinance adds charges and increased fines, while making it appear that police have more power than they actually do. It appears on paperwork simply as disobedience to police in a public place. Refusal to obey the police without an actual violation of law or ordinance is not a crime. It is, in fact, the right and duty of a free society to challenge authority and hold it to a higher standard. Finally, I'd like to thank those who supported me in this effort, and I'd also like to officially apologize to my husband and the Evanston Fire Department, who I mentioned in the heat of the moment. Neither were involved in my protest, and I did not ask for any involvement on either their part. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. All right. Next up, is there Sylvia Rodriguez here? Okay. I think she was just, okay. Janard Rizki, then Mike Vasilko, and then Ray Friedman, and then Mary Rosinski is the last one.
Janard Rizki. The decent people in Evanston are increasingly expressing their disgust to the City Council's uncivil actions against them, and council members don't like it. The council supports incompetent performance of city staff, covers ups and lying outright ways to misuse our tax dollars for private interest. Setting up to borrow $85 million with no understanding of its cost to the taxpayers shows complete incompetence. I'd say it's a tax increase of 15%. Along with all the other messes here Mr. Bob Kowitz has helped create, we easily are pushing a 50% property tax increase. I have added up this before of what I consider all the mistakes here, and that's 25% property tax increase. What isn't a problem here? On Howard Street, we're wasting money. Another $1.5 million tonight's going to be bonded for a private theater. It's ironic, the Economic Development Department claims Howard Street's a success when you're borrowing money. Tonight, you have the settlement with Smalley Brothers. This deal was collapsing nine months ago. I mean, it's pretty clear it was doing that last fall. And basically, nothing was done, but now we have this big push. We need to go out for proposal. But the real question is, why wasn't this even put on the tax rolls by the staff? I found it rather ironic that the staff person suggested they didn't have enough time to do the work when they wrote, basically, the proposal. That's very interesting to me. Of course, you know, we support a dinner theater. What about the neighbors for the water park? Are they going to get a water park at the pumping station? You don't have any money in the budget for that, but you promised them a water park. Now, we've got a $7 million boondoggle of a water park called Fountain Square. What's better tonight, staff is going to ask for a change order on Robert Crown for engineering. What I found interesting there was they're extending a contract to 2021. And I thought I was told here at the council meeting not too long ago, we're going to finish next year? Well, it doesn't look like it, and it looks like we're headed off to like Fountain Square. We've got the Friends of Crown, we've got the friends who want to demolish Harley Clark. Do we really have any friends of the taxpayer here at all, really? I think the newest thing that the city's fabricating now is it's going to cost us no money to take down Harley Clark. I estimate already the city's wasted probably $10,000 of our money and staff's time trying to take the building down, and these people are far short. It'll be well over $1 million to do this. Does anyone real up here remember the tall tale about that Robert Crown would cost us nothing? Unfortunately, there's a lot more bad news here coming with the lawsuits and other rumors I keep hearing about behaviors of people here. I hope when you people evaluate Mr. Bob Kowitz shortly, he will be given an unsatisfactory performance review and really start to look at whether this contract needs to be terminated and how soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizki. Next up, Mike Vasilko, then Ray Friedman, then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening. Haven't been here for a while. Did you miss me? Okay. So, just quickly, to reiterate what Janard just said, I was hoping somebody could tell me, tell us, how much the tax increase is going to be for the $85 million bond issue over a period of time, and specifically for the Crown Center project, which is presented as $53 million, but when you run out with all of the interest, it's closer to $73 million, and how much that is going to be for a tax increase for property tax, or property owners in Evanston. It seems, before you vote on subjects like this, that at least you can tell us what it's going to cost us. I haven't seen any documentation in any of the 200 pages of bond issued documents, or any of the Crown Center documents, exactly what taxpayers are going to spend individually for that kind of an increase in our taxes. The other misleading thing I found was, in all of the documentation, was the Friends of Crown have been saying for a long time that they've already raised $11 million and are heading towards $15, when in fact, they've only raised $2.6 million in cash. The rest are pledges, and pledges aren't cash. Their contribution isn't even indicated, except for, they call $3 million, not the $11 million, not the proposed $15 million. So, how is that factored into this bond issue that's being considered tonight? I also see a line item associated with lead commissioning in the documents. That's roughly $100,000. That's not for lead certification. That's just for the time the architect spends. So, I think there's a line item missing, a cost missing, for lead certification, if that's what you're going for. The construction manager's contract that you're being presented with, which is really just a draft and only a few pages of a longer document, refers to a guaranteed maximum price, but it's not, again, a guaranteed maximum price. If it were a guaranteed price, it would not be subject to additions by change order, which is what the document said, in addition to a long list of items that they exclude, which, if you read all the fine print, there's a long list of items that they're excluding. So, it's not a guaranteed maximum price, as you're being told. There's also over 50 items of specifications that are listed as not issued in what was considered for the guaranteed price amount. There are, on page, or page 316, these design assist items that are listed that are, in theory, going to reduce the price by $1 million or so. Those items will cause more work for the architects and the engineers, so it's going to be a give and take.
Mike, I need, we're past our three, if you can just wrap it up quickly.
Okay. Well, just one more thing, two more things. Actually, the $73 million with interest, I really would like you, Mr. Mayor, because you're the one who's said publicly that you're not going to raise our taxes to pay for Crown. I'd like to know what our taxes are going to be as a result of this increase. And Janard mentioned it as well. The change order for the engineering, that's a 51% increase in the fee, which I just find embarrassing for anybody to submit to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ray Friedman, then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Manager Bob Kowitz, City Clerk Reed, and City Council members. I'm very concerned about this proposal to issue bonds for $50 million to finance Robert Crown. It appears that Robert Crown has taken top priority here in the city of Evanston. About a month ago, the residents received, after a lot of publicity, a questionnaire about Evanston's priority-based budget, asking questions about priorities of 46 out of 152 programs, talking about cutting police-fire department as cost-cutting measures, but there was not one question about Robert Crown expenditures. Is having a new recreational facility here in Evanston our number-one priority? What is the plan to pay back this $53 million, plus, I read it's $33 million in interest, not what the last gentleman said, which brings it to $86 million, not $73? A few blocks away from Robert Crown is the Levy Center, and then Mason Park, Fleetwood Jordan, Ecology Center, Lighthouse Landing, plus a total of 77 parks under Evanston control. I would like to think that our City Council is doing what is best for Evanston and best for its residents. I believe Mayor Hagerty said last City Council meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we should have a plan to pay back this $53 million before it's spent. And I say before tax increases. I don't mind you spending your money to beautify our city, but I think we, the residents, should have some say in how you spend ours. The Robert Crown Center was supposed to be done at little or no cost to the city of Evanston, just like the Harley Clark project, but the Lake House Gardens Group is still offering to rehab Harley Clark Mansion at no cost to city taxpayers. And printed in Evanston Now, yesterday, says that the budget projections from city staff show that the new Crown Center will still be operating at a loss. Please do the right thing for city and its residents and hold off on this $50 million bond obligation until we have a balanced budget and we have a plan to pay back the debts we will have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Next up, we've got Mary Rosinski. She's our last speaker that signed up.
Hi, Mary Rosinski. I do want to say that behind me is Ailey, and she signed up online, but her name wasn't on the thing, so just letting you know. I actually am here on three different issues. One, I wanted to thank Devon Reed for that wonderful session with Joan Bunnely, the Rules of Order. I think a lot of people found that very, very informative, so thank you for doing that. The second thing I was here for was the transfer tax stamps. I know you're going to have that discussion about it in my business, that increasing our transfer tax stamps would be detrimental, I think, to, first of all, the image of Evanston. There's only 74 communities in all of Illinois that have transfer tax stamps, and of those, only five are higher than ours, and all the rest are much lower and are split. So, I would say that I would like us to kind of put that on the back burner right now as sellers in this town are getting beat up on a lot of other things right now. So, just consider it. If anyone wants us, I have all the municipalities in Illinois that have transfer tax stamps and their amount. The third thing I wanted to just address is, on the issues tonight, is the RFP for the recycling center. I know there's talk both ways of, should it be for profit? Should it be for nonprofit? And I would like to really encourage that you keep it maybe both ways, but nonprofit doesn't mean that a lot of money and a lot of good things don't come from it. And, you know, there's more than just the initial dollar. There's the services, there's the education. I'm personally thinking of the rebuilding warehouse, if they go in there. I bring a lot of people from around the North Shore to Evanston to go to the rebuilding warehouse when they're thinking of redoing their houses. They come here, they use all their services, and it also makes Evanston look kind of cool. People are talking about you, in a good way, because of the rebuilding warehouse. So, I would really encourage you to keep that for a nonprofit and look at the other costs that come in because of what they do. And the last thing I'd like to say, I just want to clarify for people, because, you know, I've been working on Harley Clark for years, and we keep getting equated with the Evanston, people don't have tax dollars for Harley Clark. And we've said from the very beginning, not from the very beginning, but for the last year, this is not an Evanston tax dollar issue. I mean, we want to, we'll give you the $15,000 to start. Give us a year. Just give us a try to bring this project to Evanston before you go tear down our only public, beautiful building on the lake. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, Mary, I'd be interested in that list that you've got. We can provide that to the council members, too, and others. Thank you. I know we have it for some, but I don't think we have it for all, every single community. I was interested in Alderman Rainey.
I have nine copies, so if you want, I will do them.
Sure. We'll take them up here. Thank you. Welcome, Ailey. Why don't you give your whole name, and you've got three minutes.
Oh, goodness, I'll talk really fast, then. My name's Ailey Harned. I live in the 2nd Ward. Good evening, council members. City Manager is missing, but Dr. Effie, am I right?
We have our Assistant to the City Manager, Kimberly Richardson.
So sorry. My bad. I am new to this, and that's part of the reason why I'm here, and everybody else. This is my first time speaking at City Council, so forgive my nerves, and I will try to express my thoughts. Like many Evanstonians, I'm a person with many interests and many passions. I have my hands in a lot of pots. As a matter of introduction, I'm a school social worker in District 65. I'm a member of the Robert Crown Advisory Board. I am a parent of a soon-to-be kindergartner who attended the fabulous Robert Crown preschool for the last three years. I am what my late parents would call a flaming liberal, a progressive Democrat, involved in several political campaigns in the state and around the country. I believe in, and I'm passionate about, a lot of things. I believe we need to win the House of Representatives back in November in order to have a chance of winning our country back, and that we should be helping out in that. I believe campaign finance reform is the best chance to have a free and accessible election so that all citizens may have a chance to be an elective official. I believe about, I care about all the children and families in Evanston, and believe that we need equitable educational opportunities, affordable housing, mental health services, and youth services. I believe children-inflamed should have clean water. I believe that Blake Peters' game-winning buzzer beater is the best play of the year and should absolutely win the SB Award, and everybody should be voting for that online right now. I believe that private citizens should have the right to protest the horrors going on in our country during the Fourth of July Parade without being arrested. And I believe that demolishing the Harley Clark House would be an inconceivably horrendous, woefully short-sighted, and undeniably irreversible mistake. I've only recently become involved in the efforts to preserve Harley Clark, and in my efforts to catch up on the years-long debate, I realize that, I have spent a lot of time watching City Council meetings, sitting here through meetings and watching recordings on YouTube and reading minutes online. I have a really exciting life. I have spoken with my alderman, Peter Braithwaite, and I do appreciate his time, but I still have questions. It's been informative to talk to him, but I'm still wondering some things. I was out of town on June 18, when the sea of blue shirts was here, when 29 people who spoke about Harley Clark during public comment, 24 of them were in favor of preservation, and only five were pro-demolition. And even one of those people was like, I'd like to see Harley Clark remain in Evanston. So, since I missed all the fun, I'm here tonight to ask some questions. #LaterGram. I'm curious how the city can justify a $52 million project that we taxpayers will be funding, but not support a project that is projected to cost just 10% of that, which will be funded privately at no cost to taxpayers? I'm curious how the Lighthouse Dunes Group can say that Evanston doesn't have the fund- Dooms Group can say that Evanston doesn't have the fundraising bandwidth to support Evanston Lake House and Gardens project, but they're also, in the same meeting, excited to have raised $300,000 in pledges in three weeks. That sounds like some bandwidth to me. Speaking of that, I'm curious how pledges for that project count towards meeting-specific benchmarks, but pledges towards the lake house don't count somehow because they're not cash in hand. I'm just confused about that. I don't understand how people can say that they heard from somebody that roof tiles are falling out, or that it's falling apart, but both the city of Evanston and Evanston Lake House and Gardens Group have had multiple professional assessments done, and that say the building is in great shape.
I need you to wrap it up.
Wrap it up, okay. I'll save that for another meeting. I don't understand why residents in the Fifth Ward were originally told that they were getting green space in the site of the former shore school, but then found out that the city is building a pumping station that will lower their property value and make a lot of unwanted noise, but residents near Harley-Clark can offer a gift to the city to return it to green space. Why should they get green space, but my friends in the Fifth Ward should not?
Seems like a good spot to end it on.
Wait, this is important. Near the end of the school year, I will. I had a parent in my office talking to me. They were thinking about leaving Evanston because they just couldn't make it work here. But then they made the decision to stay, and they said something that's really profound. They said, "I realize that all of my problems are in Evanston, but all of the solutions are here, too. I believe in this Evanston. I believe we can do it all. I believe we can come up with solutions and make it work." I know they won't please all the people all the time, but what is the public benefit of another quarter acre of grass in a space where there's already six acres of parkland? Something I haven't mentioned yet is that I've never actually stepped foot in Harley-Clark. I believe in the potential of many future years of amazing educational experiences for my son and for all the children of Evanston, for an unending variety of possibilities for year-round public use of this beautiful and irreplaceable building. If the council votes to demolish it, I believe it will be a horrible and unforgivable failure of imagination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ale. Okay. All right. Priscilla, you can, all right, you'll be, excuse me. Who do, what do I have for signed up? I've got Ale, I'm going to, Priscilla Giles, and then, that's it? There's Darlene Cannon here? Are you signed up, Darlene? Okay, I don't see Darlene, so you're the last speaker. Welcome, Ms. Giles.
Thank you, Priscilla Giles, Fifth Ward. I received a two-page, I believe, it was about two-page paper from the police department last week about noise. And last council meeting, the police chief said, he talked about the noise ordinance in Evanston. I don't know why I would get a two-page letter about noise in my block when there could not even be a sheet for these people who did not go out to for this Evanston priority base, which is everybody. And if we have a problem of having communication with everyone, I think that that is, my block should not get a two-page paper about the noise. I called other people in other wards, and they did not get this paper. So I think the people who make the noise are the ones who should get it, and people who need to have the priority-based questionnaire should have it. Everybody doesn't go to the barber shop, not everyone goes to the library, and not everyone goes to the community centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your participation in public comment. We're going to move now to the agenda of the city council today. We've got three items on, or, excuse me, yeah, three items on special orders of business. So the first one is SP1 Ordinance 71-0-18 authorizing 2018 ABC and D general obligation bond issues. This is for action. The staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 71-0-18, providing for the issuance of one or more series not to exceed $50 million in general obligation purpose bonds. We've got city staff here, our city finance officer, and so let me, is there a, we'll do this just as we do other items. Is there a motion to move this?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. So I can't remember who did it, but thank you to whatever staff read my brief statement from last week when I wasn't here. Now that I am here, I would just say that, you know, I have the same feelings. I don't really like the idea of such a large bond amount. That being said, I do also recognize that Robert Crown is a building that we need to take care of, and unfortunately, we're at the point where, you know, we really just can't wait anymore with the repairs that's needed. As you know, myself and some others came kind of in the middle of this process, so, you know, we are where we are. And while I don't like such a large bond amount, and I will continue to push for us to have a better long-term financial plan, particularly around our capital improvements, I will support this tonight. I am, as people talked about, concerned about taxes. I've been very open at my ward meetings that I don't really think we can go much longer without a tax increase. And I understand that that's going to hurt a lot of people, including myself, who pays taxes here. But we just can't continue to bond, and we have a lot of projects in the city, and a lot of buildings in the city that need to move forward. So while I will be supporting this because of the importance of Robert Crown and where we are in the project, we can't turn back, I will continue to push for a better financial plan. And I think that the citizens, or I would hope that the citizens really dig down into the financials of the city. And while we do need to look at expenses and how we spend money here, I think we also are going to have to look at revenue. And so when it comes up that we have the opportunity to use some of our city assets for revenue, I would hope that people understand part of that is doing that so that we do not have to raise taxes. And so I just wanted to kind of make that clarity between, you know, what I said last week with my strong opposition continues, but in the responsible manner that my job calls for, I will support this increase tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Rainey, did you want to say something? Okay, Alderman Rainey.
I'm just wondering if we can zero in on what we think the effect is going to be on the next tax bill. That would be very helpful. I mean, we know, we know the capacity that the Friends have. I mean, it's huge. We know that. And I think it would really help to have some, some concept of the impact on the tax bill.
Sure. So Hitesh, could you come on up? And just for background, so this, the council has, you know, been talking and working on this for many, many, many months. There was another session, I remember when Bill Stafford was here, Marty Lyons, I don't think, Hitesh, you were here at the point, where we talked about what the impact would be. And that was when it was at 47 million, I believe, 48 million, what the impact would be to the property tax levy. So I think that might be a starting point to share that. The feedback from council and many people up at the dais was, property taxes are already really high here. You know, we've got to figure out another way to pay for this debt service, whether that be through reducing expenses elsewhere, whether that be through identified dedicated new revenue source, which is what Alderman Fleming just referred to, or taking a look at other city assets and doing a real analysis of those, whether to reallocate assets, so to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, and the members of the city council. It is the Chief Financial Officer. So yes, what we are envisioning for this year is just a part of the Robert Crown Center funding, and it is around $20.2 million for these years. I just had deferred this issue in the two parts. One part is the 2018 bond share, and the other piece is the 2019. The reason is twofold. I don't want to borrow the money and start paying interest on the money, which I don't need right now. The second piece is, I want to see how aggressive we are in our construction schedule, you know, and I want to see the cash flow. At the same time, we want to see the, how the fundraising is going on. So that helps us in reduce. So I needed the time, and I needed to save the city the money, the interest cost on the money which I don't need right now. So what we are doing for this year in 2018, we are issuing 20 million bonds, and with a $2.5 million in upfront premium amount. So roughly, we would get the $23 million of cash, and which we can use. And I would continue to keep it like a kind of, from a cash flow perspective, that where we are. So either we need the bond issue in 2019, early in the springtime, or maybe as late as in the fall time. So we would save a lot of money in the cost. At the same time, we will have to see how the Robert Crown, the Friends of the Robert Crown doing with their fundraising efforts. Now, in terms of the amortization schedule, I think Mayor mentioned that, yeah, that's a good thing about having some kind of a dedicated source of revenue. And we are, the staff is looking at some of the options, you know, in the existing revenue stream, or even the, some of the new revenue stream, other than property tax levy, and see how much money those efforts would generate to pay for the debt service for the Robert Crown. Just looking at the amortization schedule for 2018 bonds, even we are paying the interest for our first few years, just to kind of make sure that we kind of align with the other part of our debt schedule, you know, the outstanding bonds from the prior year. So we start making the principal payment on the fifth year, and then going forward, the debt service would be around 1.4 to 1.5 million annually. But yes, absolutely, our focus is on to find some of the sources of revenue which are either existing, or the new sources of revenue which we can dedicate for the payment of the debt service for the Robert Crown.
Right. And to that point, one of those that's in discussion on the agenda is the transfer, the property transfer tax for later today. Alderman Rue Simmons.
I may have missed it. I was hoping to hear a projected or estimated percentage increase in taxes, like to the
The property taxes?
To the property taxes.
I mean, I don't have it. I think that was presented in the February meeting. What would be the
That was presented, if I remember right.
I can get it.
The overall cumulative increase in this, and they factored in the normal, about 2% increase that generally happens, was 4.7%, if I remember correctly, from that February meeting.
Yeah, we will look at, we can provide that, yeah. What would be the impact on the property tax levy? Absolutely.
Alderman Rainey.
Are we, are we at a reassessment period?
It would be the triennial, not this year, right?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just had it. And that's why everybody, everybody got hit with the District 65 and the triennial assessment.
So that was last year in '17. It was in '17. Okay.
Well, just to clarify, when we talk about a 4.7% increase in the property tax, that's the city's portion of the property.
Just the city's portion, which is, which is about 20% or so.
Right, right. So I don't want residents to think that the whole property tax is going that far.
Okay. So based on, I'm looking at what we presented to the city council in February. It was around 3.3% based on the 2018 levy, and I think it was around 25 million in the original estimate. So it would be a 3.3% increase to the tax levy on our February presentation.
And was that based on a $20 million bond?
Right. I think 20, 25 million. But it wasn't the entire, but yes, you're right.
And what was, what was the Friends of Robert Crown projecting at that point?
I mean, we still had the same amount of $2.5 million in cash, and the goal of like 15 million total pledge, yeah. But we haven't accounted for that yet in these things, yes. Because we worked with the, what do you call it, our bond council and the financial advisor, and if we issue the bonds, and then they get their cash in the subsequent years, we can definitely use that money to pay for the debt service.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have, do you have the numbers up there? Somebody made reference to a public comment, and it was of interest to people up here as well about the amount of additional expense it will cost to run Crown, and the amount of additional revenue that will be generated by Crown. Right? So we know, just so everybody's on the same page, we know, we know that parks and rec run at a loss to the city of Evanston. It's part of government and in serving families and others that use our recreational facilities here. And I think, if I remember right, we lose $6 to $7 million a year, meaning our, you know, expenses are around 13 million, and we take in six or seven, six or seven million in revenue. And I see that our Parks Director just came in, Lawrence Hemingway.
Right.
One of the things that, one of the things that Marty Lyons talked about was that with this new facility, you know, additional rev, in a sense, net revenue will be generated with this new facility, which actually can be used to help pay off the debt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Reed, members of council. That is correct. Mr. Mayor, your first comment was toward, you know, the cost that our department runs. I mean, right now, we have a $12 million budget, of which we generate approximately $6 million budget, and then so that remaining $6 million is funded through the general fund. With Robert Crown specifically, we're anticipating an increase in operational expenses, but also an increase in revenues once the new facility is completed and we have a full year of operation. The numbers that were presented back in February showed that, you know, we currently operate, the Crown Center currently operates at about a $700,000 loss per year. If we hit our revenue projections as planned, you know, we could, we're hoping that, you know, we will reduce that subsidy to approximately about $400,000. And the plan was that difference is the money that'll be used and be dedicated to go into the Crown Maintenance Fund. And that's how you get to fund the Crown Maintenance Fund, because we're generating, you know, the city is still overall subsidizing us, but now that we're generating more revenue with the new facility, the city can now put money aside in, dedicated to the Crown Revenue Fund. And so that was the plan that we discussed back in February.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Larkin Lewis. Is that possible? Just, this is just a Republican assumption. Is it possible, you mentioned, Hitesh, that in February we had that discussion about the tax increase. Is it possible that you can email that? I may think that document that I'm not referencing right now would be very helpful to the public as we talk about tax increases, so that people who need to, you know, just start thinking about that financially can. I happen to carry my tax bill around, because people never believe that the city doesn't collect as much tax money as we pay. So I do. And so, you know, based on what you said, my tax bill will go up about $76. I'm never excited about paying more money, but I just want to give a reference to people. Although, again, I don't want to charge anyone more money than we have to for my tax bill, and I don't live in a multi-million dollar house. I'm looking at about a $75 increase. And for our city to have a nice new Robert Crown that ideally is going to last for a very long time, and I don't even ice skate, I'm willing to pay that for this project.
Oh, okay, sure.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
I guess along those lines, on the Crown page that's on the website, we do have that September 2017, a lot of data, a lot of information, a lot of numbers. But maybe if you could just update that website page with the current numbers, that'll be useful for people who go and look that up. So it'll be, it'll be more current.
Right, absolutely. And the one thing which we are waiting for, that I know we have the estimated cost, but like, within a month, once we issue the bond and close on it, we would have the definitive numbers. These are still the estimated numbers, depending on the market conditions at that time and the financial. So, yeah, we are just waiting for that, you know? So we have the actual numbers there.
Okay. And just, I guess, a little editorializing. We all take this money situation extremely seriously. So this is not a decision that we're taking lightly, and we've all, you know, worked on it from, you know, over a year to many years. So just so the people that are watching understand, this is not taken lightly. So with a lot of work, time and energy's gone into developing a plan that we feel is, is responsible. But to Alderman Fleming's point, and also the mayor and others, we do take this charge to address how we're going to pay for this debt very seriously on this upcoming budget.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Seeing no, seeing no more lights. We had a motion and a second for Ordinance 71-0-18. City Clerk, could you go ahead and take the roll, please?
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Nguyen.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Hi.
Alderman Sufferton.
Hi.
Alderman Revelle.
Hi.
Alderman Rainey.
Hi.
All right. SP1, Ordinance 71-0-18 authorizing 2018 ABC and D general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $50 million. Passes the Evanston City Council eight to zero. All right, we're going to move to SP2, which is a discussion of the real estate transfer tax increase options. Again, this is, as I mentioned a second ago, Again, this is, as I mentioned a second ago, one of the, you know, could, could be one of the dedicated revenue sources to help with this debt. City staff, would someone like to get up and, and just give a quick, quick overview of this? I know we've got a memo in the packet, if that's... All right. Oh.
Good evening. Michelle Mason-Cup, the Law Department, prepared the memo at your request.
Oh, okay, Michelle, okay.
What information would you like?
So let's, so let's go ahead again. This is for a discussion. So why don't we, is there, is there someone that, Alderman Rainey, I know you had put this for, do you want to start off the conversation here?
We can, you know, we, we can avoid the elephant in the room, which is more money, you know, to run things. So we have to talk about different ways to get more money. And I know nobody wants to talk about it, but it has to be talked about. You can either talk about increasing the tax bill, which is a rather regressive way because it hits everybody, or you can talk about something like the real estate transfer tax, which is only going to affect somebody who is selling their house. So it's, you know, probably, I don't know, how many houses a year sell or, or commercial properties, what, maybe? I have no idea of knowing this. Let's just take a, maybe 15% of every property in the city sells a year? Alderman Fisk, you were in real estate?
Sounds high to me, I don't know.
All right, well, let's, let's say that's a fact. Let's just say, let's just make that up. So only 15% of everybody in the city would ever be affected. So let's all vote for this, okay? Because it's not going to affect you. And it's going to generate some money. I've asked staff to tell me what would a dollar, we're now paying $5 per thousand of the sale price of a property generates whatever we get per year. What would a doll, what would another dollar and a half or $2 for properties over a million 225,000, what would it generate? Would be interesting to know. And there is no restriction on, on doing this. It's not going to hurt many people, and I don't believe it's, I don't, I don't believe it's going to harm people who have a million-plus properties. I know when I sold my house recently, nobody said, oh, I'm not going to buy your house because there's a real estate transfer tax in the city of Evanston. It wasn't the issue. So, you know, no matter what tax you put on what, those people who have a vested interest in that item are going to complain. So the least regressive kinds of revenue generators are the places we should look. Putting, putting an additional rate increase on water, on gas, on sewer, those are regressive. Everybody does that on food. Syntax is not so much. But we just have to, if, if we want to raise money, we have to look for places to add additional percentages on, in order to raise it. It's real simple.
Right. And so, and so one of, what you talked about last time and what's in this memo, for those of you that haven't read this packet, is whether you can do a progressively higher transfer tax based on the value of the property.
On higher value properties.
So right now, in Evanston, it's a flat 5%, right? Five dollars, five dollars per 1,000.
If you have a $90,000 condo, you know, a studio, you're paying $5 per thousand. If you have a $10 million house, you're paying $5 per thousand. So I also thought there are, there are communities and there are states where if you have a brand-new Mercedes, you pay more for your wheel tax than if you have a 1995 Corolla. And then the city of Evanston, everybody pays the same. You pay 75 or whatever it is. Everybody, if you have a passenger car, we all pay the same. So that might be another place to look.
So Michelle, can you just talk about, I mean, you did the research on this. Is there anyone, you know, and I've read the memo, but just so everybody's on the same page about what you found?
This progressive tax idea has, there is no other Illinois community with this structure. We did find the city of San Francisco has a progressive tax that's outlined in the memo. So it is allowed. This would be the first community to have a progressive transfer tax.
Could I say something to that? We, they're also, you know, and the, the memo said that, you know, we would, we could probably be subject to a lawsuit. Well, we were the first community, and we've been talking about for probably 10 years, eliminating the township. And we were the first community that did that, and look, we still survived, everybody got helped, and every other community now that has a township is talking about it. And they're using us as an example. Look, Evanston did it, and everybody survived in Evanston. So I, you know, we're at the forefront of a lot of good ideas, and I would really encourage us, if we need the money and, you know, the fewer people that get hurt, the better, so.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
So if, if we're going to do this, let's, let's just say that we, we think about the, the transfer tax and how it's imposed now is on the seller. So let's say you're selling your home, you're going into a retirement home, you need every single dollar to pay for your retirement. That's a lot of money to spend. But some of these communities, they split it between the buyer and the seller. So let's say we keep it at 5% to the seller and make it 1% or 2% to the buyer. The buyer is more likely to use the city services and the city parks and the amenities. I would be interested to know, and maybe Ms. Rosinsky can provide us with the information, how many times in a real estate contract are the real estate taxes actually negotiated between buyer and seller? Because I think that probably happens more than we're, we know. And I don't think we know that through the clerk's office. I think the clerk collects the taxes and, and maybe that's, make sure the water bill is paid and all of that. But I'd, I'd be real interested in getting more information from the real estate community and seeing if there's a possibility of, of splitting things in a little bit more equitable way.
Right. There's a lot of ways to skin the cat. I mean, the other thing you could do is you say, okay, right now sellers pay 5%. And if you wanted to move it from a total of 5 to, to 7, you could say, hey, we're going to actually lower it for sellers to 3.5% and put 3.5%...
Just, you keep saying 5%. It's not 5%.
Sorry, sorry. It's per thousand. It's, it's point, it's 0.5, so excuse me for that, but...
Just to see you're terrified.
You're following what I'm saying there. Thank you, though, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Revelle?
So the, the mention of our showing the way in terms of eliminating our township is, is one thing, but I think if we're talking about doing something, testing the waters with a graduated transfer tax, my, my concern would be that we would be sued for that, whereas we weren't sued, I don't believe, for the township dissolution. And then, and if we were sued, then what, we would be collecting the money and putting it aside, until we saw what happened with the lawsuit. I, I think it would be, given, given that the reason we're trying to, that we're talking about increasing the transfer tax is because we want to find other ways than the property tax to be able to, for example, abate the debt for Robert Crown, I, I would rather that we not try to do something that has a strong likelihood of, of having a lawsuit.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
So I hope we were going to continue this conversation. I, you know, I don't know what the likelihood of a lawsuit is or is not, and I don't want us to, to do that. But I did have a call from a constituent who did not, she, her concern, which I never really thought about, was that she was downsizing within the city. So she was selling her house, moving into a condo. And she said, well, what about not, you know, if I didn't pay it because I'm living in the city and I realize that's making the waters more murky? But just to throw that out there, I do like the idea of maybe transferring or putting in some kind of payment on the buyer, so then the sellers don't just think they're footing the bill. But I do agree with what Alderman Rainey said in terms of trying to find some revenue that is not necessarily going to affect everybody. And as we have people come every month or so and talk about affordable housing and how are we going to keep people here, and we hear from people who talk about property tax increases and such, or the, you know, $5 for parking increase or $10 here and there, I would like those people to kind of think through these kind of increases because they have the ability to generate some more money that Alderman Rainey said might not hit everybody. But it also then helps us to try to keep the overall tax base lower so that we can keep a diversity of income in our city. And I don't want to necessarily just make people who have more money pay more money. However, you, if you have more money, you can afford to pay more money. And I think that people who live here in Evanston and always come and talk about the diversity by race or income or whatever that is, should think about this, you know, these type of tax increases being a way that we can keep our particularly lower-income or elderly or whatever citizens here in town, because we have people who can't afford to pay a couple more dollars, who are going to pay a couple more dollars. So again, just as an FYI to the community, as we have these conversations, please be more thoughtful about who these are impacting and who they're helping, and that our goal is to keep the diversity in the city, but we have to do that in a way that is going to be, you know, helpful for some and maybe just a tad bit inconvenient for others.
Great, thank you. Alderman Wen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think these are all really good points. I do think, I don't know that we're going to make a decision on this tonight and that we don't have to right now, but I would like to get more information. I agree with Alderman Revelle. The last thing we need is to put ourselves in a position where we become the target of litigation. So I think if the Law Department could provide us with more information about other, other, other states and, or other municipalities where this occurred, where litigation may have happened, not just San Francisco, which might have been more amenable to it, then also if we could get some of the numbers that we're asking for, number of real estate transactions that took place, you know, every year over the last five years, and then number of real estate traction, transactions that Alderman Rainey's idea would, that it would implicate and how much money that would generate. So I, I'd like a little bit more meat on the bones here before we decide to move forward.
I would just add, and I'd really like to see a breakdown of commercial sales versus, versus residential. Okay, Alderman Wilson, thank you, Alderman.
Most of my points, I think, have been addressed by, by the other comments. I do have a degree of hesitation generally because I know that we, it was before my time, but it's been tried before without passage. So I wouldn't want to put too many eggs in that basket, but it's, I think it's, it's an interesting conversation to continue.
Great, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I have a quick analysis of the 2016 sales over a million 225,000. It would have created an increase, it was over 250,000, an increase of 211,751 dollars just for that one year.
Great, thank you. So, yes, if staff can put together a consolidated analysis of that for everybody, that would be great, Wally. Okay, seeing no more lights.
I'll come back on the 23rd then with that.
Okay. Terrific, terrific. If you need a little more time, you might be able to have it, but, okay.
Again...
Sorry. If you did want to meet the referendum parameters, we have to put it on for the 23rd.
And, and I apologize, I missed some of the conversation, but this idea of just keeping the, the format of the tax the same but raising the rate, was that something that was discussed? Or most of the discuss was?
Well, Alderman, Alderman Fisk raised the, the idea of, you know, having the buyer, you know, if maybe you put a percent or a dollar or two additional, that you put it on the buyer.
But, but not raising the existing tax the way it is levying currently? Okay, thank you. But maybe.
But that doesn't do anything for the budget.
For higher, for higher price per property, it would be higher.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right.
But it's higher overall.
Correct, correct. Okay. All right. We're going to go ahead now and move on to SP3. SP3 is the application for appeal to the City Council, the Preservation Commission decision denying certificate of appropriateness for 917 Edgemere Court. Let me, let me just start, start this conversation off by saying that the current ordinance, when it comes to an appeal of the Preservation Commission to the City Council, or some may argue to the Planning and Development Committee, is, you know, as clear as mud. And so there was a lot of back and forth with, in the city late last, late last week in terms of an appeal that was submitted by the homeowners, that was submitted on Tuesday, received by the city on Thursday, and late Friday was put onto the agenda for this meeting as a special, as a special order of, of business. There was a speaker during public comment, as well as a lot of conversation between council members and others up here about wanting to make sure that there was appropriate notice and time for people to see all the documentation and everything else. And so in communication today, I was proposing that we not take action tonight on SP3, but instead, what's my, what's the...
I'd like to make a motion.
The language, but a...
To table it?
To table, to table it to a date specific. So that's just sort of, that's sort of the background. You know, this is, like I said, right now on here for action today. The other thing is, the way that it was envisioned is this was for action to whether or not the council was going to accept this appeal. And then there was going to be a subsequent meeting to actually hear the appeal. And again, there's lots of, there's lots of different perspectives on this project and everything else, and we do need to make sure that there's an appropriate amount of time to hear that, so, yeah.
So having heard the comment, also heard other comments, I agree with what the mayor said. I'm going to move to table it until July 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now we're open for discussion. Alderman Fisk?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is, this has been, just for you folks in the audience, this has consumed, I think, most of our weekend trying to figure out how to sort this out. I would disagree with the mayor on one point. I think it's really clear in the city code what, what is supposed to happen with an And I want to follow that because I think if we don't follow process that's in the city code, then we start creating a precedent that just comes back to bite us again and again and again and again in the future. And it's not fair to us, and it's not fair to future city councils to do that. We've been through, I mean, it happens from time to time on various issues, and I always think, what in the world was that council thinking way back when? And we have to sort of live with a precedent that we create. We don't need to do that here. So let's just do it right. And the way the, the appeal is outlined in the city code is that the, the application for an appeal is going to be submitted to the Planning and Development Committee for action to accept or deny. Once that happens and it goes to the full city council, because our Planning and Development Committee is not composed of the full city council of nine members, we're only seven members. So the full, then the full city council has the authority to review, grant and/or deny the appeal of the certificate of appropriateness. So what I'm proposing is that at the meeting on the 23rd, that the Planning and Development Committee consider accepting the appeal. And that same evening, then it move, provided that the Planning and Committee, Planning and Development Committee decides to accept it, that it moves to the full city council at that same meeting. That provides enough time for the application to follow the process, which is, again, defined in the, in the city code. It's, it has to be submitted to the commission on a form prepared by the commission within five business days, and it's going to contain all the information that we need, that we need to have in order to make a decision. I felt as Chair of the Planning and Development Committee this weekend, I was totally blindsided because there was no supporting documentation. I had no idea what was going on. And, and that's... I had no idea what was going on. And that's just not the way we should do business. It shouldn't be that suddenly, you know, affected neighbors suddenly hear about this and they've never heard about it before, they weren't expecting it. That's just not what we should be doing. So let's just try to clean this up. And I think we can do it all, again, same night, and take care of it, but it's done properly and the process is followed because otherwise we're just opening the door to make problems for ourselves down the road. So that would be my amended motion. Can I amend a motion?
Point of order, point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
A motion to table is not debatable. We should have voted on the motion to table.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I agree totally with you, but a motion to table is not debatable.
Okay.
Corporation counsel?
Lighten up our meetings.
Motion to table is not debatable. That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Needs a majority vote.
We do need a majority vote. Then, City Clerk, we had a motion with a second. Can take the vote?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman, when?
A very reluctant aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
All right, so SP3, application for the appeal of the City Council, the Preservation Committee decision denying certificate of appropriateness for 917 will be tabled to a date certain, which is July 23rd, to be heard by the city council. And that was on a vote of seven to one. Okay, we're going to move in now to the consent agenda. Alderman Fleming, if you would take us through minutes, and then the Administration of Public Works.
Yes, through minutes of the council, sorry.
Yeah, if you'd add M1 to your
Okay. So consent agenda, M1 for the minutes, the regular city council meeting of June 18, 2018, and June 25, 2018. The Administration of Public Works went through the agenda and asked to accept A1 payroll, June 11, 2018, through June 24, 2018, in the amount of $3,235,279.13. Bills list dated July 10, 2018, $2,617,387.38. The 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to be accepted and placed on file. The contract with Grooman Butt Kiss Associates for the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center HVAC Architectural Engineering Services, that is in the amount of $47,330. A5 is the contract with Llewellyn Technology for Citywide Arc Flash Program, that is in the amount of $53,575. A6, the approval of 2018 PayStation Expenses, a total parking solution in the amount of $33,000. A7 for the Robert Crown Community Center ICE Complex and Library Construction Manager Services Construction Award Contract, in the amount of $47,400, excuse me, $47,741,803. A8, Consulting Contract Amendment Number Two for bidding negotiation permitting, Construction Administration and L E E D Commissioning Services for the Robert Crown Community Center ICE Complex and Library Project. Were we taking that one off?
Not unless somebody moves to.
And this is amending the agreement from $2,146,833 to $3,246,483. A9, Resolution 48-R-18, memorandum of understanding for the CTA, for the modernization of the CTA Purple Line in Evanston, paying for, out of the Washington National Tiff Fund. A10 is Resolution 27-R-18. Mutual termination of lease, city-owned property located at 2222 Oakton Street with Smiley Brothers. I would like to take that one off if I may do so as a chair.
Okay.
A11 is the Resolution 47-R-18 issuance of a request for qualifications/proposals for the reuse of recycling center at 2222 Oakton Street.
So is it held in committee?
No, it was not held in committee. Okay, that's taken off the agenda by Alderman Revelle. And A12, Ordinance 70-0-18, amending city code section 10-11-7, passenger loading zone at 1,007 Church Street for introduction, and Ordinance 75-0-18, amending city code 10-11-7, adding a loading zone at 609 South Boulevard.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fisk, would you like us to take us through planning and development?
Sure. P1 is tabled in committee until the 23rd. P2 is Resolution 34-R-18 approving a platypary subdivision for 2020 Greenwood Street. P3 is Ordinance 80-0-18 granting a special use for a type 2 restaurant, Got to Be Crepes, at 2901 Central Street. That's on for introduction and action this evening. And P4 is Ordinance 79-0-18, amending various portions of the City of Evanston zoning ordinance, revising minor Preservation Commission review procedures. It is applicable defenses, historic structures, sites, and landmark districts, and definitions to revise the language and procedures regarding the review of special uses and variations by the Preservation Commission, and that is for introduction.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle can take us through human services?
I, we're taking that off the agenda also.
You're going to take that off the agenda?
I mean, we're going to
To talk about.
Talk about it.
Okay, terrific. Let's see, Alderman Wilson, can you take us through Rules Committee? And then Economic Development?
Okay. Rules Committee, O2, Ordinance 69-0-18, amending city code section 2-14-2 regarding membership of Housing and Community Development Act Committee. This is changing the makeup of the commission. That's for action. The Economic Development Committee, O3, Entrepreneurship Support Program applications. They have multiple applications. The staff and committee are recommending approval of financial assistance through the Entrepreneurship Support Program, totaling $5,000 for the following three businesses: Hair Science for $2,500, Aerospace Careers Network Resource for $2,500. Funding is from Economic Development's Business Retention Expansion Fund. Okay, there are two. I apologize, I said three. I was thinking there were three. O4 is the storefront modernization program applications. Staff and Economic Development Committee are recommending approval of financial assistance on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis through the storefront modernization program to the following Evanston businesses: 10-Q Chicken at 816 Church, in an amount not to exceed $3,401.66, 1030 Davis, in an amount not to exceed $18,143, and Connections Health at 1854 Sherman, in an amount not to exceed $2,705 for an awning. Funding is from the Economic Development's Business District Improvement Fund, and that is for action.
Great. And I'm going to ask that we take appointments off the consent agenda. Is there a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Fisk? Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a vote of seven to zero. We're now going to move to the items that were pulled off. Alderman Fleming, if you could take us through the first one. A10, it's the Smiley lease.
Sorry, Resolution 27-R-18, the mutual termination of lease with city-owned property located at 2222 Oakton Street with Smiley Brothers Draft and Package LLC.
All right, is there a, is there a motion to move? This is for action? Second? Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I took this off. I made a mention in committee that I would like to see Mr. Smiley and his associates continue to work with our staff to come up with a better solution. I, you know, I guess appreciate where we are now in terms of paying three months of rent, as well as some utilities fees, but I do think that we want to work a little harder on that. The project, you know, we went forward in good faith with this and found out at the end that they were not going to move forward right before we were expecting to have this on our tax rolls and start collecting rent on the building. So I just feel like we should make another effort to go back and negotiate and see how we can amend this in a little better fashion.
Alderman Sufferton?
I just want to say, I agree with Alderman Fleming. It's a lease where we would have realized $1.6 million from, I think lending him out for around $50,000 is too light. And I think that we should go back for more.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, and there was a motion, and it was seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please? This is on A10, Resolution 27-R-18.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
All right, on item A10, Resolution 27-R-18, mutual termination of a lease of city-owned property located at 2222 Oakton Street with Smiley Brothers Draft and Package LLC, passes the Evanston City Council on a vote of five to two. Okay, let's go and move to item A11. Alderman Fleming?
Oh.
I didn't pull that off. That wasn't pulled off.
I had, Alderman Revelle pulled it off, but Alderman Fleming, can you just introduce it?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I forgot you pulled it off. All right, on Resolution 47-R-18, the issuance of a request for qualifications/proposals for the reuse of recycling center at 2222 Oakton Street.
Well, I just wanted to go back to the very tail end of the discussion in AMPW, where Alderman Rainey directed staff to revise the RFP to indicate that it would be, that only property taxpaying entities would be submitting proposals. And I can certainly understand that that's the inclination or the bias at the moment of the many members of the council, but I guess I would like to see us still leave it open for a non-property taxpaying entity to make a proposal if they want to go through the effort to do that and demonstrate the other ways that they can bring important revenues and benefits to the community, and then let us evaluate that proposal along with all the others.
So is there a motion to move A11? Because I didn't hear that.
Second.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
There's a motion.
The, this is for action. A11 was Resolution 47-R-18, issuance of the request for qualification or proposals for the reuse of the recycling center.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just wanting to keep, to have the RFQ/RFP remain open enough that a non-property taxpaying entity could make a submission.
Right, and right now, that RFP does not have that.
Right now, it does, but the direction at the tail of AMPW was to revise it to limit it.
Okay, got it. Okay, we got Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Rainey.
Okay, so I just need clarification. I was intending to vote on the proposal as it's in the packet. Is that what we're voting on?
The proposal in the packet. Is very clear that once the user takes over the property, property taxes will be paid on the property. It's very clear, yes.
But after it's leased or sold, the new user will assume responsibility for payment of taxes. But that does not preclude someone who might purchase it who has no obligation to pay taxes.
But that's what I wanted. I did not want any payment in lieu of taxes. That, because, you know, we've all seen that happen. They can do it the first couple of years, and then all they want to do is pay the city portion. We went through that with Joan Docks, and that didn't work. And, you know, I mean, promises, promises. That's not what this property is going to do. This property is going to go on the tax rolls, and it's going to be a revenue generating piece of property. And I just think we'd be wasting our time. We might as well just, you know, I just think it's just not a responsible thing for a group of Aldermen to do, is, you know, before you know it, we'll be renting it for $1 a year. This is not going to be Harriet Lee Clark South.
All right, so the answer was, we're voting on it as it stands. It hasn't been modified.
That's what I know.
Yes, that's right. And we're still in discussion, but we got a motion, a second. Alderman Revelle?
I mean, I guess I would say that when the staff is going to evaluate the various proposals that come in, and select one to, the highest ranking one to come to the council, I imagine it's going to be one that's going to be from a property taxpaying entity. But I would like to see us at least keep the door open for these other proposals. I'm not suggesting that you're going to, because we're going to suddenly approve something for a dollar a year lease.
Okay, Alderman Sufferton?
I guess I don't understand what the harm is in letting not-for-profits make a proposal. We can always reject it. So if anybody could enlighten me as to why we would preclude them from even making a proposal, I'd love to hear it. But if not, let's let them do it.
All right, so let's go ahead and take the vote as is right now, and if that fails, then we can come back to modify. All right? What's that?
I don't know. She's coming back.
We're about to take a vote. Alderman, when?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I know you're dealing with a vote that we just took out there in helping get everybody on the same page on that issue. We're on A11, which is the issuance of the RFQ or RFP for reuse of the recycling center. The main discussion point up here has been Alderman Revelle and Sufferton asking to open this up to consider proposals from nonprofits who wouldn't necessarily be paying property tax.
I'm sorry.
That's
I'd like to move to hold this.
Well, right now, we got the motion that was seconded.
That's true, we do. I call the question.
Second.
Question's been called.
So, okay.
I was supposed to say, all those are paper, calling the question.
Vote on the main motion.
Vote on the main motion.
All right, I want to make sure I understand.
We're voting on number 11.
But there was no second to hold, was there?
Everything happens so fast. Alderman Rainey called the question, and then there's no debate, right? So who spoke first is my question.
Alderman Rainey made a motion to hold.
Now we're supposed to vote on calling the question.
I think Alderman Rainey made her motion first to call the question.
To call and question is the vote on this resolution, A11. So, all right, City Clerk, you take the roll.
Yes, Alderman Fisk?
We're not voting?
We are voting.
No.
Voting on calling the question, right?
Not on, not she.
I do believe that the motion to hold would trump the other
No, I withdrew that.
Alderman Ruth Simmons seconded that motion.
Okay, all right, we clearly need some clarity, including me.
I withdrew that.
Okay. Corporation counsel. All right, we initially had a motion that was seconded, which was on this actual item, Resolution 47-R-18. We were in a discussion point, and then Alderman Rainey, you know, I don't know, is it fair to say motion to hold?
She moved to hold, and then it sounded like she withdrew it and then called the question. Is that, that was my understanding.
Okay, so we just called the question. So we're taking a vote on the original motion. Okay, is everybody clear on that? So this vote, this vote?
Vote on the called question.
You should vote on the called question.
On the called question.
Okay, we're going to vote to call the question. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Back to the main motion.
Now I'm back to the main motion. That was, do I have to get it in second again? Or I already did? All right. So, City Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
All right, so A11, Resolution 47-R-18, which is the issuance of a request for proposal of a request for proposal, a request for qualifications slash proposals for the reuse of the recycling center at twenty-two twenty-two Oakton Street, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to two vote. Alright, we're gonna move to the next item, Alderman Revelle, if you could introduce that, that's O one under Human Services.
Right, so the Human Services Committee recommends that staff no longer post arrest records on the City of Evanston's website, but that staff would continue to maintain the daily crime bulletins and make arrest records available upon request, and that was where the Human Services Committee left the issue, and subsequent to that, there was further conversation, and Chief Eddington basically requested that the policy allow the posting of arrest records to the website for a rolling fourteen-day period, so I guess my motion for the council is that we post the arrest records to the website for a rolling fourteen-day period, and staff has ensured that the reports do not get indexed by search engines.
Second.
Alderman Fleming?
Yep, so thank you for this, I would like to clarify for the public that you can still go onto the city website, and as you can with a lot of other information that we provide, you can sign up to receive the daily crime bulletin in your, in your inbox, so that service is still available for you, and I also would like to ask if we can, after speaking with our IT, CIO, or I'm not sure his title is, we had a discussion about the administrative adjudication records that are also posted online, and they're not posted as regular, you can also get those into your inbox, but because they are kind of one and the same, in that they list a person and their crime, and their address, and so on and so forth, but no follow-up in terms of what happened with the charge, I would also like to amend that we add administrative adjudication to the same scope of fourteen days, and then it comes off the website.
I have a question.
Alderman Wen?
Yes, Alderman Fleming, I just wanted to find out if, for instance, someone hears about a couple of things happening in their neighborhood, they aren't already signed up for the daily, you know, the daily crime bulletin, and they decide, I wanna find out what's happened in the last week or two, is it possible for them, then, under this, with this, this process, for them to sign, to, to go on the city's website and look up to see if there have been three burglaries in their neighborhood in the last fourteen days?
Yes, so everything for fourteen days will be on there, so as the city staff puts the new record up, they'll take, you know, the.
Right, so that means, so they don't already have to, they can look backwards, and they don't have to be signed up.
Right, and if they wanted to look at something that was thirty days ago, they could call the police department.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, FOIA. Also, the, the police department, and maybe Chief Eddington can clarify this, we subscribe to, I think it's Crime Stoppers, is that, so it's crimestoppers.com, which actually gives you a lot of information on a little map, you can put your address in there, and so, you know, so there's a lot of ways in which, if people are interested in general crime in their vicinity, they can find that information out.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted, just to, because, you know, some people become interested, and then wanna know what's been going on, or they hear something, or they see, see squad cars, and, and they remember it, oh, there was like four or five days ago, I wanna find out what happened, and they can still do that.
They can.
Okay, alright, that's fine, thank you.
Alright, so does someone, seeing no more lights, does someone wanna move O one, which is removal of arrest records, records from the website, they'll be on there for fourteen days.
There was an amendment.
And there was, and there was an amendment to, to add the administrative adjudication.
I think that was seconded as well, correct?
Seconded, yeah.
So I think we're just calling the question.
Right.
So should we vote on the amendment?
Yeah, we gotta vote on the amendment first. So all, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the other has.
Two amendments, cause also Alderman Revelle in amendment as well.
Well, she just was pointing out, I think, is what was in the packet.
Yeah, she was just saying.
She was just pointing out the change, it was in the packet, it wasn't an amendment.
Alright, so the amendment's been approved, all in favor of removal of arrest records from website with the amendment, well, the amendment's already been approved, so.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, O one, as amended, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote. Alderman Rainey?
However, the crimes that have been committed are still going to be available, there are no names on those, the incidents that have occurred, right? I mean, we're gonna be able to get those whenever we want, right? The daily bulletin crimes. There are no names on those, you don't know.
There are, correct. Okay, next item, I would like to ask the council to, I'd like additional time to look at the appointments, these were all for reappointment today, I pulled it off the consent agenda, and I'd like to come back to you at a future, at a future meeting on these, as well as some, some other appointments. Okay, alright, so with that, let's go to call, call for of the wards, Alderman Fisk, did we start with you today?
Uh, no report.
Okay, thank, thank you. Alderman Wen?
Yes, this is, I wanted to let everyone know that the next third ward town hall meeting will be July twenty-sixth, Thursday, but instead of Lincoln School, which is our regular meeting spot, which is closed right now, we're meeting at the Karavali Montessori School, it'll be from seven to eight-thirty, again, Thursday, July twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Morton turns one hundred this year. And we are honored and privileged to call her neighbor in the fifth ward. Shorefront has produced a documentary of her life, it is called A Life Worthwhile, and they will host a viewing of this documentary here in our ward at the Civic Center on July thirtieth at eleven-thirty AM, I hope all will attend. Additionally, Family Focus has been nominated for preservation status, the nomination was presented by Shorefront Legacy, and it will be defended tomorrow at the Preservation Committee at seven PM, I believe it's here in the council chambers. I'm hoping that all that have any opinion about the historic significance of Family Focus will come and have public comment at the Preservation Committee meeting, thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Sufferton?
No report.
Alderman Revelle?
Yes, thank you, I'd just like to express congratulations to the Canal Shores Golf Course, they recently received the twenty-eighteen Silver Ribbon Award from Friends of the Chicago River for the ecological restoration work that they've been doing on their, that amazing green space, they recently completed an ecological restoration master plan, which provides a framework for improvements to the wetlands' wildlife habitats and plant and tree species along the riverbanks, and it identified areas for enhancement and potential restoration, so a lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers at Canal Shores, and it's really great to see them recognized.
Great, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I know, I know the council all knows about this, but maybe the community doesn't, but a wonderful city employee in the Health Department, Carl Caniva, passed away last week, and should all give a lot of thought to his family, wonderful guy. Wanted to announce that the Howard Street Business Association is meeting at eight-thirty on July eighteen, Wednesday, at Peckish Pig, everybody in the eighth ward is invited. On Tuesday, July seventeen, Bremel Park, very famous concert and food truck festival, five-thirty, be there early, or you won't get any food, South Boulevard Band will be playing, look forward to seeing everybody.
Terrific, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I just wanted to, two things, on the eleven, at six-thirty, there is a community meeting at Robert Crown about the project, and I know I have many, my ward bumps up to that, and so particularly my residents on Main Street, I wanna make sure you all come and hear about upcoming construction, and how you might be impacted there, so that's at six-thirty, I believe it's in the gymnasium. I also would like to just, I know that Alderman Disk had made this referral some time ago about a park district analysis, I hope it's coming up soon for us to look at, but as we just talked about, the increase in property taxes with Robert Crown, and mine being the seventy-five dollars, if the community wants to think about how we can offset some of the cost for our parks, to make sure our park buildings and things are taken care of, that is one way that we can do that, I know I get a lot of calls about why our beach is free, and so on and so forth, and a lot of surrounding communities have park districts, so just be thinking of that as we have concerns about capital improvements to our park facilities.
Great, thank, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson, could you lead us into executive session?
Yes, I move pursuant to five Illinois compiles statutes, ILCS one-twenty slash two A, that the City Council convene into executive session to, to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and litigation, these agenda.